All right, let's call the order. The City Council meeting with roll call, please.
Councilwoman Zindejas.
Present.
Vice Mayor Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Duggan.
Here.
Councilman Suppanow.
Here.
Councilwoman Kerr.
I am here, but I have to go.
Councilwoman Zaro.
Present.
Councilmember Uranga.
Present.
Councilman Austin.
I'm here.
Councilmember Rix Odie.
Here.
And Mayor Richardson.
I am here.
Have a corm.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Duggan to lead us in the pledge of moment of silence.
Let's start with a moment of silence. As our hearts go out to the family and friends of the Louisville shooting, please take a moment to remember those lost and those grieving the loss of their loved one. Please bow your head for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please stand if you're able to recite the pledge of allegiance.
All right, thank you. And I did reach out to Mayor Craig Greenberg of Louisville and express our condolences for the circumstances there. Today, we have two presentations. We have the continued hearing from last week, and then we'll proceed through the agenda. Let's start with tax fraud day of action. Vice Mayor Allen.
Okay. Do we have a presentation for this? All right, so you have three people here. So I think we have Jesse, Joseph, and James. All right, Jesse, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor Rex Richardson and honorable City Council members. My name is Jesse Marquez, and I am a representative of the Southwest Regional States of carpenters, who lives in the city of Long Beach and provides for his family in the city of Long Beach. I would first of all like to thank you for giving me and our members this opportune time to share with you how tax fraud in the construction industry destroys communities. Let's stop it. You pay your tax dollars like a reasonable citizen. Why should construction contractors get to cheat? These cheating contractors cost everyone in the city of Long Beach. The losses just keep on mounting. More than $8.4 billion a year is lost to the construction industry employer tax fraud. That's billions of dollars of lost revenue that could be used for building schools, EMT services, and for the police department here in the beautiful city of Long Beach. The number of construction contractors that cheat is increasing. They pay their employees off the books or less often, and they wrongly classify them as independent contractors. It's done intentionally, so they don't have to pay any taxes on these employees. Many of these contractors use labor brokers to get their manpower, and they operate in the dark shadows of the underground economy, where human trafficking and other kinds of worker exploitation takes place. We all lose when construction contractors commit tax fraud, the taxpayers, law-abiding contractors, and insurers. Our taxes pay for bridges to be built and for teachers and schools to function. Our taxes protect our city. In California alone, tax fraud cost us $302 million in 2022. How can you help protect tax-paying contractors and their employees? Support fair competition in the construction industry. Support law enforcement helps to stop tax fraud and insurance fraud. Talk to your colleagues and fellow elected officials about how we can do more to stop this. Thank you once again for this opportune time to speak to the City Council this evening.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Goldblatt, Local 562, a Long Beach resident. The tax fraud days of action grew out of widespread outrage and construction industry tax fraud, a range of practices where employees use criminal practices to walk away from tax responsibilities. These developers and contractors intentionally misclassify workers as independent contractors, pay workers in cash, and exploit vulnerable workers. The result: these businesses have a criminal advantage no law-abiding contractor compete with. The practice's business model that is found hand-in-hand with human trafficking and forces the victims to live in an underground economy. You cannot rent an apartment or a vehicle without proof of income. Thank you.
Hello, Council. My name is James Matthews, Carpenters Union. The financial servitude destroys workers' lives, opportunities, and future. The exploitation of workers also defraud communities out of much-needed tax revenue that funds your fire departments, schools, libraries, health services, and road maintenance, all while increasing the developer and contractor's profits. As now and now, as communities are facing budget shortfalls due to lost tax revenues due to rising inflation, it is more important than ever to bring accountability to criminal employers who are stealing from residents of Long Beach and surrounding cities, and justice to the workers they exploit. So it's definitely important that the city helps takes actions by making sure that we are able to prosecute those companies that are doing tax fraud. It's better for the city. It helps the financial stability of the city, and it takes the burden off the taxpayers who have to pay maybe extra taxes due to that, because there's enough problems that they have to deal with now by just trying to live everyday lives. They don't need to have that burden by companies who exploit the workers out there and put undue financial hardship on everybody. Thank you for my time.
I just want to say thank you, Jesse, and Joseph, and James, and everyone that's here today for standing up and educating us on tax fraud. I absolutely support fair competition and just really appreciate your advocacy. All right, Mayor, I hand that back to you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let's hear it for our carpenters for joining us and educating us on this critical issue. Thank you so much. Next, we're going back to Councilmember Vice Mayor Cindy Allen to show a video on Ramadan.
Oh. Okay, I'm gonna start the video. Sorry. So we just need to start the video in the back?
You want to introduce it?
Oh. Yes, this is the, it's the March 24th Ramadan video. It's playing now, and I'll talk about it when it gets done.
Assalamualaikum. Thank you very much. So when I just taught you guys, I forgot the most important part. Assalamualaikum means peace be upon you. I'm wishing peace upon you. And when you say walaikumussalam back to me, you are wishing peace upon me again, back. So I really hope that you can take away the spirit of this greeting, the message of this greeting. Ramadan is one of the most sacred months in the Islamic calendar. For the entirety of the month, Muslim fast from dawn to dusk. In this time, we abstain from eating, drinking, and sinning. Fasting is an act of worship, and it is one of the most important pillars of Islam, and it is a way for us to practice our devotion to God. It strengthens our relationship to our Creator and our faith, and it reminds us of all the things that we have to be grateful for in life.
It's been exciting for me to learn more about Ramadan through the process of planning this and then also the process of this event tonight.
Interfaith events like this really highlight the sense of belonging and how we all can practice our faith and believe what we believe, and our city will represent us no matter how you pray. In our city, we have your back.
We're not 100% sure, but we're pretty sure this is the first time we've celebrated Ramadan here at the city, and we've had an interfaith iftar like this, so it means a lot for everybody to join us tonight. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Love that.
So what's gonna happen right now, as soon as the time sun sets, the sun sets immediately, we're gonna raise the call of prayers, and I'm gonna translate it. In that time, we're gonna start breaking our fast. In date, this is the, the Qulit Sunnah, we used to have dates and some milk or some water, and that's it, and go praying and continue. So thank you very much again, and may Allah bless you, may God bless you all, and bless the city, and give you the strength to work, the beautiful work, as we always hope that you're gonna do that. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for that video, and I also want to say thank you very much to Aaliyah Khan. I don't know if she's here today for my staff.
Allah Akbar. God is great. God is great. Come to the prayer. Come to the success. Come to the success. Allah Akbar. God is great. I am proud of this. There is no gods, but only one God. Thank you. At the time to break the fast.
All right. Well, thank you so much for that wonderful video, Long Beach TV, and also to Aaliyah Khan from my office for organizing this event. On March 24th, as you all can see, we gathered in our lobby of City Hall with all of our Muslim neighbors to celebrate the beginning of Ramadan. So I'd like to thank Imam Tarek Muhammad. I don't know if you're here today in the audience, and his daughter Samu from the Long Beach Islamic Center. Also, I want to thank Mayor Rex Richardson and Councilwoman Kerr, like I said, my field deputy, Aaliyah Khan, and just everyone who attended the event. I do believe, like it was said in the video, this was the first time that we recognize Ramadan and the city, and I was very proud to lead this effort. So I think when we come together for interfaith events, we make space for everyone to come together, to dialogue, to break bread, and to learn. So, and then again, just, I can't say enough thank yous to Long Beach TV, who comes, who videotapes these events, so we can share it with all of you. So I really appreciate all your efforts in this video and this short presentation. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And Vice Mayor, thanks so much to you and to Aaliyah and your team for organizing just a well-done event recognizing, celebrating Ramadan. I hope that you continue that tradition here. All right. So we'll now go to our consent calendar. We have items 1 through 20. We're gonna pull items 8, 11, and 20 for consideration afterward. So we have a motion and a second.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I believe it's items 11, 14, and 20?
I have 8, 11, and 20 to pull.
I believe it's 11, 14, and 20. Let me take a look. So then we need four items. 8, 11.
So 8, 11, 14, and 20.
Correct.
All right. So we have a motion and a second for the consent calendar minus those four items. Councilwoman Kerr?
Yeah, I just wanted to draw attention to item number 13. We're really excited in District 5 and beyond that we are getting grant funding to do a design program for Willow Springs Wetland Restoration through Measure H dollars. So $1.2 million approved by the County Board of Supervisors. We're super grateful for them and the taxpayers, obviously. This is the start of what we hope to be at least a decade or more-long restoration and preservation of Willow Springs Park. So I just wanted to call that out and say we're super excited about it.
Thanks for lifting that up. Did you say Measure M?
I said Measure W.
Measure W. I think you said Measure H. You meant, I think you meant W. But that's a great project, Measure W project. Thank you so much. Is there any public comment? Is this one for consent?
That's general.
Okay. Is there any public comment? No? Okay. Members, please cast your vote.
Vice Mayor Allen? The motion is carried.
Thank you. We'll take number 8 next. Actually, we're gonna pause and hear the report out from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one thing to report out from closed session. There was a final settlement approved in a case, Sevis versus the city of Long Beach in the amount of $437,500. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear item 8, please.
Item 8, the report from Health and Human Services, recommendation to execute all necessary documents with the National Association, county, and city health officials in the amount of $115,000, Citywide.
Thank you. I think there's a request for a brief report.
We'll have our Director of Health and Human Services, Kelly Colapi, to do a brief overview of this item.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. So this is funding to support different programs within our Medical Reserve Corps. So the Medical Reserve Corps, which is otherwise known as the MRC, is a national network of more than 3,000 volunteers. In Long Beach, the Medical Reserve Corps is housed within the Long Beach Department of Health and Human Services under the Public Health Emergency Management Division. We have about 2,000 volunteers across the city who have registered specifically to work at Long Beach, and our volunteer pool consists of medical and non-medical volunteers that provide support during our times of need and during public health emergencies. So there are students, RNs, LVNs, physicians, dentists, veterinarians, mental health providers, and more. During COVID-19 pandemic, approximately 425 MRC volunteered, equated to 27,000 hours of donated time to help support our response. They also, you know, they served as flow control greeters, registration administrators, swabbing at test sites, vaccine runners, observation, administering COVID-19 vaccines, and also supported the call center. And many of them have come on to be employees of the city, so it's from an employment route. The other efforts the MRC has engaged in over time is our annual vaccine clinics, our MPOCs vaccination sites, and they participated in local exercises with our department and in collaboration with the LA County's Department of Public Health. So to qualify to be a volunteer, you have to be 18 and over and registered with Disaster Healthcare Volunteers. There's a website there. It's called healthcarevolunteers.ca.gov. And then, once their credentials are validated, then they can apply through longbeach.gov/mrc to be a volunteer for us. These grant funds are supporting their operational readiness and also what we're calling the Rise Program, which really strengthens our ability to respond, innovate, sustain, and equip the MRC, including offering search training for up to 80 MRC volunteers. So with that, I'm open to questions. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Rix Odie?
I read this item and just really wanted to highlight it, because I think when we think about, you know, the pandemic and the emergency response, right, I think sometimes the work of our city and the work of volunteers and residents, right, it's kind of the, it's kind of the background people that you don't necessarily see that make all of this run. And so I thought the idea of really how our city interfaces with the Medical Reserve Corps, how we utilize them, how those people give of their time and their energy really to serve our community was something I really wanted to elevate and highlight.
Councilmember Kerr? Okay, I think that was just a second.
Yeah, just a second.
Okay. So thanks so much for highlighting this. Just one note, is the National Association of County and City Health Officials acronym really Nacho?
Nacho, but there are quite a few that call it Nacho.
Not very healthy of a name for city and county health officials. Just joking. Is there any public comment here? Okay. Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, we have item 11.
Mayor, I will be recusing myself from this item as it directly affects my benefits to my office. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll take a moment before we read the item.
Item 11 is a report from Human Resources, recommendation to adopt resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 salary resolution to establish director of police oversight and executive personal aide clarification and adopt or am amending the departmental organization read the first time and laid over to the next regular meeting of the City Council for final reading, Citywide.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any public comment here? Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. 14, please.
Item 14 is a report from Parks, Recreation, and Marine, recommendation to adopt resolution authorizing city manager to approve a grant application for the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy Proposition.
I'm sorry, I should have recused myself before she read the item.
Okay. We're gonna take a moment for this recusal.
Out of a badness of caution, I work for the RNC. That's why I'm recusing myself.
Thank you.
Item 14 is a report from Parks, Recreation, and Marine, recommendation to adopt resolution authorizing city manager to approve a grant application for the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy Proposition 68, Lower LA River Grant Program for the 51st Street Green Belt Program, amount up to $2 million for completion of the 51st Street Green Belt, City 8, Council District 8.
Councilman Austin?
I'd like a staff report, just briefly, on this. I think this is a great item, by the way, and this is, I think it was pulled because there was a council member that needed to recuse themselves, but this is an opportunity to talk about another new park project that we are working on in the Grade 8 district.
We'll have our Human Resources Director, Joe Albino, discuss this item.
Parks Director, Brent Dennis.
I'm sorry, wrong item. Brent, our Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you.
I only know a little about human resources. Good afternoon, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, and Councilmembers. So this is another very exciting project, and as you know, the process that always comes before you first is when we applying for grants, whether at the state or federal level. So this $2 million will be a huge leap forward for this particular park in Council District 8, and we've always appreciated Councilmember Austin's leadership and support of major park improvements such as this. So very excited for the community and optimistic that it's a very worthwhile project that we trust will be funded.
Thank you. Councilmember Uranga?
Anytime we have an opportunity to open a new park and to receive grants, I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rix Odie?
I echo what my colleague just said. Whenever we can invest in our parks, increase open space, particularly in the uptown North Long Beach area, it benefits our entire community. So this is fantastic.
Thank you, and I will concur with all of that. How much more money is needed for, to finish this project? Will this complete the project?
Yeah, there is no matching grant requirement for this particular $2 million request, so I think we'll be a little over halfway there in terms of being able to fulfill the entire project.
So there's three, because there was some funding initially, and then there's the funding from Congressmember Barragon's request, and then this funding. So beyond that, there's still additional funding needed to finish this?
Yeah, I don't have the exact number here, but we can provide.
Okay. I would just be curious to know what's left.
Yeah, sure.
Councilman Austin?
So this park has been funded so far with a $900,000 grant from the Port of Long Beach, $2 million grant from the federal government, thanks to Congressmember Minette Barragon, and hopefully we get this grant. It'll be up to $5 million, and I'm told that was enough money to get this park funded. But it's, when developing parks, it's always a sliding scale.
Good. Good to know. Members, is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. Next is item 14?
Item 20?
No, 20. Yeah, 20.
Item 20 is a report from Public Works, recommendation to execute all documents necessary to enter into a memorandum of understanding with related street improvements at Redondo Avenue and East 20th Street, District 4.
Thank you. Councilman Suppanow?
Thank you. So this item is for the construction of a traffic signal at the corner of 20th and Redondo in Council District 4. So what I'm asking support in is pausing this process for a period of 45 days, so we can gather a stakeholder input on this. So the calculation for that stakeholder outreach would be a couple of weeks to get the notices prepared, and then 30 days for a response. By my calendar, I think that brings it back on June 6th at the earliest. So I'm asking for support in this, and also with that outreach in particular, I want to reach the residences in the Palms, east of Redondo, and Aubrey at Alameda's Bridge of west of Redondo. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Zindejas, anything?
Supportive.
Fantastic. Any public comment here? Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
All right. Thank you. We'll now go to, we will take item 21, please.
Item 21 is communication from Mayor Rex Richardson, Councilwoman Mary Zindejas, Chair of Arts, Cultural, and
authorizing city manager to approve a grant application for the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy Proposition 68 Lower L.A. River Grant Program for the 51st Street Green Belt Program. Amount up to $2 million for completion of the 51st Street Green Belt, City 8, Council District 8.
Councilman Austin.
I'd like a staff report, just briefly, on this. I think this is a great item, by the way, and this is, I think it was pulled because there was a council member that needed to recuse themselves, but this is an opportunity to talk about another new park project that we are working on in the Grade 8 district.
We'll have our Human Resources Director, Joe Albino, discuss this item.
Parks Director, Bren Dennis.
I'm sorry, wrong item. Bren, our Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you.
I only know a little about Human Resources. Good afternoon, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and council members. So this is another very exciting project. And as you know, the process that always comes before you first is when we applying for grants, whether at the state or federal level. So this $2 million will be a huge leap forward for this particular park in Council District 8. And we've always appreciated Councilmember Austin's leadership and support of major park improvements such as this. So very excited for the community and optimistic that it's a very worthwhile project that we trust will be funded.
Thank you. Councilmember Yoranga.
Anytime we had an opportunity to open a new park and to receive grants, I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rexody.
I echo what my colleague just said. Whenever we can invest in our parks, increase open space, particularly in the uptown North Long Beach area, it benefits our entire community. So this is fantastic.
Thank you, and I will concur with all of that. How much more money is needed for to finish this project? Will this complete the project?
Yeah, there is no matching grant requirement for this particular $2 million request. So I think we'll be a little over halfway there in terms of being able to fulfill the entire project.
So there's three, because there was some funding initially, and then there's the funding from Congressmember Barragon's request, and then this funding. So beyond that, there's still additional funding needed to finish this?
Yeah, I don't have the exact number here, but we can-
Okay, I would just be curious to know what's left.
Yeah, sure.
Councilman Austin.
So this park has been funded so far with a $900,000 grant from the Port of Long Beach, $2 million grant from the federal government, thanks to Congressmember Minette Barragon. And hopefully, we get this grant. It'll be up to $5 million. And I'm told that was enough money to get this park funded. But it's, when developing parks, it's always a sliding scale.
Good, good to know. Members, is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. Next is item 14.
Item 20?
No, 20. Yeah, 20.
Item 20 is a report from Public Works. Recommendation to execute all documents necessary to enter into a memorandum of understanding with related street improvements at Redondo Avenue and East 20th Street, District 4.
Thank you. Councilman Supranaw?
Thank you. So this item is for the construction of a traffic signal at the corner of 20th and Redondo in Council District 4. So what I'm asking support in is pausing this process for a period of 45 days so we can gather a stakeholder input on this. So the calculation for that stakeholder outreach would be a couple of weeks to get the notices prepared and then 30 days for a response. By my calendar, I think that brings it back on June 6 at the earliest. So I'm asking for support in this. And also with that outreach, in particular, I want to reach the residences in the Palms, east of Redondo, and Aubrey at Alameda's Bridge of west of Redondo. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Zendejas, anything?
Supportive.
Fantastic. Any public comment here? Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
All right, thank you. We'll now go to, we will take item 21, please.
Item 21 is communication from Mayor Rex Richardson, Councilwoman Mary Zendejas, Chair of Arts, Culture, and Tourism Committee, Vice Mayor Allen, Chair of Economic Development and Opportunity Committee. Recommendation to request city manager to work with Economic Development, Development Services, and Long Beach Heritage to develop an official City of Long Beach Legacy Business Registry.
All right, thank you. I just want to take a moment and acknowledge Manny Valenzuela and Long Beach Heritage for their leadership in developing a foundation for recognizing a legacy business designation program that the city can take steps to build upon. The idea here is there are, we know that small businesses are the backbone of our city. We also know that the way that we acknowledge our cultural context of the city is changing with the update of our cultural context statement or historic context statement. So what may be a legacy business may be, say, the first and only, say, Cambodian restaurant in the city, or, you know, a historic place, a restaurant or a business where meetings took place at one point to organize around housing justice in the city. So it has an evolving definition now. And so the city can take steps to make sure that we protect these sort of cultural and historic businesses that in many ways add to the rich cultural tapestry and fabric of our city and help make our city rich. We've asked both our Economic Development Committee and our Tourism Committee to both take a look at this because there's a lens for both. When people come to our city, they may want to know where hip hop was created at, you know, at VIP Records. And they may want to, you know, also go to the incredible Joe Joes, you know, where they saw a T-shirt around the world that said, "Joe Joes." They may want to go check it out. And so this gives us an opportunity as a city to really think about ways that we can have an intersection between supporting our local businesses and creating ways to recognize their importance of our community and to frankly protect them because it's been a very difficult time. And so I want to thank both our council members, Vice Mayor Allen, Councilwoman Zendejas, the both of them for working with us on this. And I'll pass it over to Councilwoman Zendejas.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so very proud to bring forward this item alongside you, our mayor, and our vice mayor. Earlier this year, we were approached by Long Beach Heritage to recognize Outer Limits Tattoo as a legacy business, and I cannot tell you how excited the business was to receive this special recognition. This item expands on this idea to include a wider breadth of support services that will help us retain cherished historic businesses that make our community so special. District 1, as the home to many historic neighborhoods, landmarks, and businesses, will especially benefit from such a program. I look forward to hearing back on this item from staff so that we can support the viability of our historic businesses and make sure that they are around for many, many more generations to come, and so that they will continue to tell the great story of our great city of Long Beach.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Legacy businesses are a valuable cultural asset that help define our communities and promote a sense of neighborhood, identity, pride, and definitely foster civic engagement and create meaningful, you know, employment opportunities for so many of our local residents. The mayor did mention Joe Joes, which is like one of my favorite and oldest bars in District 2. So I think as a city, it's important that we take steps to preserve our legacy establishments that mean so much to our residents. And also just they keep this unique character, too, in our neighborhoods. So great item. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Sorrow?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Richardson, as well as Councilwoman Zendejas and Vice Mayor Allen for bringing the item forward. As Vice Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Tourism, as well as a member of the Economic Development Committee, I'm in support of this item. You know, many of our neighborhoods throughout our cities is changing rapidly and is really struggling to prevent not just longtime residents from being displaced, but also our small businesses that are legacy businesses. So I think that this is going to be a great item to come to our committee to discuss how we can prevent them from being displaced and ensuring that they're contributing to the cultural and historical preservation of the area. So I also want to thank the award that was given by the Legacy, Long Beach Heritage, for presenting an award to Mr. Baker's Style Center, which has been in operation for over 70 years since the 1950s. So that's one example that I hope that will bring attention to the history and the legacy, but also ways that we can provide other levels of support that's mentioned as far as assistance and business assistance, which is why I think it'll be great to also continue this discussion in the committee and how do we work with nonprofits that do work directly with the businesses that provides these support, business technical support, so we can make sure that we're, ensuring that we're considering all of our businesses that are in the various diverse areas of our city. So looking forward to more conversation and ways that we can continue to keep our small legacy businesses in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kerr?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank Long Beach Heritage for doing this work unofficially before the city. You've laid the groundwork for the work that the city can do moving forward and staff. So I just wanted to call out their Board of Directors, Chris Hogan, Betty McKinney, Steve Gillis Moore, Louise Ivors, Sheila Gibbons, Alan Giomi, Joe Mello, Jaclyn Pedia Perez, Kim Pampanelli, and their board members, Jaclyn Case, Rick Cobb Sealy, and Cheryl Perry, and of course, their Acting Executive Director, Manny Valenzuela, and several of you are in the audience tonight. So thank you for the community engagement work that you've done in the years to honor these businesses that we all value. I know I have visits on the books to Bodell's Shoe Store, where I got shoes when I was a little girl, and of course, John Ward's Bacon Broil in the next two weeks. So thank you again for doing this work so that staff can continue to build on the work you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Austin.
Yes, I certainly support this item. I think it is very, very useful and recognizes, I just wanted to say, businesses that have endured and, you know, survived COVID and other ordeals for many, many years. I do agree with the criteria, but I'm not clear because I think I heard somebody say that this was going to be referred to a committee. Is that correct?
You know, I don't see it listed here. I think the expectation is the committees would do some work on this, Economic Development and Cultural Tourism Committee.
I mean, I think it would be helpful to kind of codify that before we vote, that it's going to go to a committee. And then, secondly, hopefully, in that committee work, there's some conversation about adding businesses that may have been overlooked or not considered on this initial list. And then, to determine how often this list will be updated, if it's an annual deal, if it's a, you know, every two years. But, because I'm sure, I'm absolutely sure that there are, you know, a handful of businesses that meet the criteria that weren't listed here. And as we roll this out and move forward, each of us as council members will hear about it from those in our districts. Those are my comments. So I'd like to codify whether or not we're going to send this committee or not.
Councilmember Zendejas, you can accept that friendly to codify that and go to the committees?
Yes.
Great, friendly, accepted. Thank you. And yeah, I would say the groups listed are groups that have been identified through the work that Long Beach Heritage has done. But by Long Beach, having its own local program, you can establish your own local criteria. So some of that will be vetted, hopefully, through the committee process. I would also say that as a city, again, is updating its own historical context statement, there have been a lot of things excluded about just the history of our city that we hope can do better moving forward. Thank you. Councilman Supranaw?
Thank you. I can't let that many references to Joe Joes go without saying that I represented that area for six and a half years. And I think this goes back to Joe Mello bringing the idea to me before redistricting. But the 4th district is not lost. We've already had an award for university trophies and awards at Lakewood and Willow, and there's an upcoming one. I'm not sure if it's out there yet, so I'll just say a dental practice is going to be awarded very soon. So thank you for this item, and thanks to Lee and Mana in the audience here. Appreciate your help. Bye.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you to the mayor and Councilmembers Zendejas and Allen. This is a great item. For many of these businesses on the list, it is a fight to keep business going and stay relevant. So I really like that we're going to look at additional technical assistance, lease and acquisition assistance, as well as grants. Those are important things to keep businesses who have been in the city a long time. But as it becomes more difficult, we need support for them. In the 3rd district, the Long Beach Playhouse has offered performances for almost 100 years, and they are part of this program. They've been recognized and supported. I'm happy to support this item. I want to see these businesses to continue moving forward and support more businesses as legacy here in Long Beach. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Yoranga.
Thank you. I want to thank the two councilmembers who brought this forward. I had the honor of recognizing two businesses in my district not too long ago. Three? Okay, three. Monal Leyes, I corrected. And it was something that's very touching, and not only the fact that we recognize lazy businesses, but I would offer them support to continue to stay in business, as well as increase the diversity and recognize the diversity we have in the city for the different types of businesses that we have in Long Beach. So thank you to Legacy Committee, and looking forward to many other opportunities to recognize legacy businesses, not only in my district, but throughout the city.
All right, thank you. I have four members of the public signed up to speak. Manuel Valenzuela, Lee Fukui, Mana Eichner, and Elsa Tong. Please come forward.
Mayor Richardson, members of the council, Manuel Valenzuela, Acting Executive Director of Long Beach Heritage. And I just want to say, wow, we really appreciated all the comments that we heard today, and we would really appreciate your support on today's motion. You know, the motion today is not just to start the process to recognize particular legacy businesses. I think it's also to recognize the community of legacy businesses. It's almost a partnership when you start a business and you work incredibly hard to get past the hurdles, right? I think I heard a statistic where after five years, I think the failure rate of businesses, something like 50%. It's incredibly high. And so I think these businesses, they wear it as a point of pride that they can exist as long as they do and that they contribute to the community, right? Every business you've gone into, you've seen those, you know, soccer photos and band photos where they're supporting the community. And we just think that this is great, that the city wants to adopt this, to support those businesses, to embrace the community that is legacy businesses, as well as to leverage the existing resources that are available. This, in a way, is a good economic development tool that is cost-effective. Councilman Austin, your comments were perfect. One of the challenges that we've run into at Long Beach Heritage is it's been incredibly hard to encourage some of these businesses to join. A lot of phone calls, emails, and I think there's some hesitancy, too, right? You know, what are you? Or do you cost money? Is this going to affect my business in some way? So I think that is something that staff, heritage, the committees can discuss, is there might be some hesitancy because it's kind of a new program. You're at the forefront, although there are a couple of cities that are ahead, but we're going to catch up. And we hope to support the city in developing the best City of Long Beach legacy business program around. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lee.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. It was exciting for us to, when we first started this, and I have to make a shout out to Joe Mello, who really, after visiting San Francisco and seeing a program there, he brought it to us. And everyone was enthusiastic about this because we saw a lot of positivity for Long Beach. And this was a way to celebrate not only the businesses, but also cultural institutions as well, such as Long Beach Playhouse, and things that are important to the communities. And Councilmember Austin, you brought up a good point, that let's cast a wide net as possible to make this program inclusive and show its diversity to everyone in the city. I really appreciate all your support over the years. When we go to these businesses and we present them with a plaque, and it's something positive. And I think all the businesses have been, that we've reached out to, have been enthusiastically supportive of this. So thank you very much. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mana.
Correct. Mana Eichner. I'm a Long Beach Heritage member on the advocacy committee with Lee and Manny and Joe. And the three of us spent, I'm sorry, the four of us spent a whole year planning what we were going to be doing, and we kind of started presenting it. And we were going to really start this thing in March of 2020. Guess what happened? Slowed us down. We are so excited that you have this happening. This is a really, really wonderful thing. And Councilmember Austin, I want you to know that we've been trying really hard to get one in your neighborhood, in your district. And we're working on Gage. And Dr. Joanie Rexody, please help us identify businesses in both your districts. We have a couple that we've been working on, but we could really use some more, at least until you guys get your stuff going. We want to continue this. We are excited about having the council involved, and we are excited for all of you that have come to our presentations. And we really, really want to get Councilmember Austin and Councilwoman Rexody, sorry, presentations in your districts as well. So we're working on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Elsa Tong.
Good evening, councilmembers. Elsa Tong, District 5 and Long Beach Forward. I do really want to thank the mayor, Councilwoman Zendejas, and Vice Mayor Allen for this really critical item. Appreciate my friends and neighbors who have really laid the groundwork. I am friends with all of the Long Beach Heritage folks who just spoke. And really want to emphasize a couple of things. Number one, most small businesses are tenants. You all probably know that I come up here and I do speak a lot on tenant issues because they're really critical. And tenants are losing their protections or have lost their protections from the county level. Most small businesses are tenants. So leaning into what Councilwoman Dr. Suli Sorrow was saying earlier, this is a really critical opportunity for commercial anti-displacement, to go above and beyond the foundational work that Long Beach Heritage has done, and to, again, to really use this as an opportunity for protections, to protect and to make sure that our small businesses don't get displaced. I want to highlight the public comments of Susanna Snim, Executive Director of United Cambodian Community, who is not able to be here tonight. But she did send in her public comments. She says, "Small businesses are the backbone to our economy and are the cultural keepers of our communities. In the past three years, UCC has seen many Cambodian-owned legacy businesses close due to rising rents and redevelopment, including KH Supermarket and La Lune Restaurant. We need further protections of these businesses, including first right to own, commercial eviction defense, and relocation funds." Susanna from UCC also recommends the city to include business navigators and navigation organizations like UCC in the partnership to develop the legacy business program, to ensure equity and cultural competency in the process and access for minority-owned and people of color-owned businesses. So again, this is a real opportunity to go above and beyond Mr. Mayor- So again, this is a real opportunity to go above and beyond Mr. Mayor. I see you. I see that it was in your 100-day plan. I see that this was in the 100 days. So thank you so much for your leadership here.
Thank you so much. Well, that satisfies public comment. Members, please cast your vote.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, before we vote. I was advised that there is a different version of this item that actually has the committee
Right.
in there, and so I was draught friendly, because it's actually part of the motion.
Right. Right. I think there was some confusion on which COBY was included in the book. But yeah, the intent is the same. We would send this for feedback to Economic Development, Opportunity, and Arts, Culture, and Tourism Committees. So that's reflected in the friendly and in the main motion, so it's there. Madam City Attorney, you good?
We're good. Thank you.
Fantastic. All right. Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
All right. Thank you. Okay. We'll now go to hearing 27. Let's hear, reopening the hearing 27.
Item 27 is a report from Development Services, recommendation to receive support and documentation into the record. Conclude the public hearing and consider one third-party appeal by the Westside Business Association of Long Beach. Adopt resolution and deny the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision, and approve two conditional use permits to operate a trucking use on two properties located at 1711 Harbor Avenue and 1515 West 17th Street, District 7. These items require an oath. Please stand for those of you who are going to testify on this item, and raise your right You and each of you do solemnly state that the testimony you may give in the court now and pending before this body shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God. You may be seated.
Thank you. Before we start, I want to go to the city attorney. Since this is a continued hearing, can you update us on where we are?
Yes. Thank you, mayor. So we have received notice that the appellant is waiving the rest of their time. I want to see if there's anyone from the appellant here. It does not appear so. They have notified us that they're waiving the last five minutes of their time. So then that takes us to the applicant's rebuttal time. They had 2 and 1/2 minutes left on their 8-minute clock, and they had reserved 2 other minutes for rebuttal. So you have 4 and 1/2 minutes to the applicant if you'd like to finish your presentation. After that, we will go to public comment, and then it will come back behind the rail.
Thank you. Applicant, you have 2 and 1/2 minutes.
The applicant has 4 and 1/2 minutes.
4 and 1/2 minutes, applicant.
I won't need them all, so thank you, though. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you again for hearing this. Weston Labarre, on behalf of Cargomatic. You know, I think following the last agenda item, this is a great segue. The one thing I just wanted to clarify is, a lot of the comments that were from the appellant was that they have bad actors in that area of the city, and what we have the opportunity to do is create a legacy moving forward of the right way to have logistics in the city. Obviously, the port is one of the major economic clusters. It always will be. It's part of our city's DNA, and we're just really excited about the opportunity, one, to create a standard moving forward for what logistics should look like in the city; two, to continue our evolution towards more sustainable fuels and sustainable operations; three, put these great people to work to help build our project; and four, just leave a legacy generationally, which we've agreed to pretty much everything voluntarily that the city has put forward, and the appellant has asked us to do with the city's approval, and agreed to have that continue with the property, even if we're not the operators moving forward. So thank you for your time today. Obviously, if there's any questions, I'll be back up to help clarify, but we just look forward to hopefully putting this process behind us and starting to get these folks to work and move forward with our transition to cleaner fuels and more sustainable operations. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. So now we go to public comment, and then we'll take it back behind the rail for our deliberation. We have nine members of the public signed up for public comment. I'm going to read them. If you could come forward, that would be helpful. Devine Pula, Eric Mathis, Rene Alvarez, Jacob Troncoza, Ashton Irwin, Lyssa Leo, Min Lu, Alejandra and Kristen. Devine, you're up.
All right. Honorable mayor and city councilmembers, my name is Devine Pula. I work for NICA LA. That's the National Electrical Contractors Association in Los Angeles, which represents about 400 electrical contractors and partners with over 10,000 IBW union electricians. And we would like to express our support for item 27 in denying the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision and approving conditional use permits to operate trucking use. The project and developer exemplify the values of sustainability, equity, and quality jobs. The project promotes sustainable practices through inclusion of EV charging stations and a green trucking business model. And the developer, Cargomatic, is committed to a strong workforce standards and partnership with union labor. These projects better our local communities in various ways, including creating a demand for apprentices, which then turn into high-road careers. Our IBW and NICA apprenticeship program provides industry-leading education to apprentices without any cost. They earn livable wages while they learn and have great health and retirement benefits. Upon graduation, they are equipped with the skills and knowledge to work on a wide range of projects, providing them with long-term career advancement opportunities and so much more. In conclusion, we strongly urge the city to deny the appeal, bless you, and approve the conditional use permits to continue with the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eric Mathis.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers. I spoke last week. I'm back again in support of this project, and I encourage the council to deny the appeal. I've worked in transportation for 10 years now. It's part of Long Beach. It's how many of us make a living, set down roots in the city, and continue to grow our families here. This project is an example of how we can continue to do so in a sustainable way. As you can see, it's going to impact a lot of our hard-working citizens' lives by providing additional economic opportunity. We're setting a standard here for how transportation should be run going forward, and so I encourage you all to deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rene Alvarez.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and honorable city councilmembers. My name is Rene Alvarez, and I am currently an apprentice with Laborers International Union of North America Local 1309. I'm here with my union brothers and sisters in support of the Green Trucking Facility project. I have lived in Long Beach my whole life and currently reside in North Long Beach. Projects like this allow apprentices like myself the opportunity to receive on-the-job training close to home, as well as union-scale wages and benefits to provide for my family. It's not very often developers like these go out of their way to include union labor, and we appreciate their continued consideration for the highest level of skill and train workers like my union brothers here tonight. I would like to urge the council to vote in support of the Green Trucking Facility project and allow my fellow apprentices the opportunity to start their careers in the area in which they live. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jacob. Is Jacob here? Jacob Troncoza? Jacob, you're up.
Good evening, Long Beach City Council and mayor. My name is Jacob Troncoza, and I am an inside-wireman of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I personally have done much work here in the city of Long Beach, and I am here to express our wholehearted support for the Green Trucking Facility Container Project. We support these potential jobs for our membership. Cargomatic is a good applicant for Long Beach. I urge the city council to deny the appeal. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next is Ashton.
Good evening, honorable city councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of my support for the Cargomatic Green Trucking Facility. My name is Ashton Irwin. I'm a Long Beach State Alumni and member of the Long Beach State Alumni Association. I lived in the great city of Long Beach for over six years, and I respectfully urge you to support the Cargomatic project that will bring hundreds of local jobs for the wonderful city of Long Beach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lyssa Leo.
Good evening. My name is Lyssa. I'm a Long Beach resident. I am a US Navy veteran. I'm a federal employee, and I'm a mother of four. And I'm here to support Cargomatic, because I see it as a local organization that supports our local community. And bringing that to my reality, Cargomatic supports Boys and Girls Club, so mothers, single mothers like me, we can go to work knowing our children are well taken care. And I want to see later down the road my kids having Cargomatic as their employer. So I'm here because, beyond business, Cargomatic supports community philanthropy, which is extremely important to me and our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Min.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Min Lu, and I'm here to represent the Boys and Girls Club of Long Beach and its support for the Cargomatic Green Trucking Facility and Storage Project. Cargomatic's due to its volunteers, mentorship, and charitable donations, or charitable support, supports our workforce development programs with our teens, and it's going to be a good year for our teens to be a part of this program, and having volunteers come and mentor them throughout the process. That will continue to help our 84 years of service to youth and young people here in Long Beach. Again, thank you for your support for the Cargomatic project.
Thank you. Next is Alejandra.
Hello. My name is Kristen.
Oh, Kristen, okay. Is Alejandra not here? All right. We're going to scratch Alejandra. Christian, you're our final speaker. Thank you.
Okay. I was born and raised in Long Beach and took advantage of a lot of the local programs that they had at Kings Park and things like that. So I am, I want to support the Cargomatic Green Trucking Facility and Container Storage Project. And I have two children as well that go to the Boys and Girls Club.
All right.
I think that's...
Thank you, Kristen.
Okay.
All right. So that satisfies public comment. We'll now take the conversation back behind the rail. Councilmember Iraga.
Thank you, mayor. And I want to thank the speakers for being here today. It has been a lazy process. Excuse me. I have issues with my voice, so please bear with me. So in regards to what happened last week, thank you again for making another slot in your time to be here today and to testify and to offer your testimony. It's very welcome. I have a few items here that I'd like to bring up, that I'd like to present to staff in regard to some discussions that you either had or not had regarding three major topics: solar panels, signage, and traffic impact requirements. We're talking about solar panels, talking about, was there any discussion regarding the need to have an increased use of solar panels with Cargomatic? And so, what has occurred? And if not, I'd like to maybe make a condition for this item here. So, Mr. Coons?
Sure. Allison Spindler, our Planning Bureau manager, is going to talk about this project in specific in just a moment, but just for you, councilmember, and for the whole council, you know, our California Building Code changed on January 1st of this year and does require both solar panels and increased energy efficiency in many buildings. So that will come into play in this circumstance, but also sort of all-new construction that's occurring in the city. And then Allison's going to talk to you a little bit more about this project specifically.
Yes. Thank you, Christopher, and councilmembers. So yes, based on some of the community feedback and what we're hearing, there is a recommendation for a potential added condition to ensure that the site includes the maximum amount of solar feasible. So the condition would read that the site shall be developed with solar panels or photovoltaic PV cells to the maximum extent feasible to offset onsite energy uses. Some of the potential locations for onsite solar panels or PV cells could include the rooftop of the office and installation of solar carport canopies above the proposed parking spots along the southerlymost portion of Harbor Ave, and to provide battery storage for the solar PV system to support power onsite energy would be highly encouraged as well. So that would be a recommended added condition if that would be suitable to the councilmember. Related...
Great. So you're going to include that in your motion? Councilmember Iraga, include that condition?
Yeah, I'll have to explain all. Three of the first I have, I left off another one. I didn't turn my page over. The fourth one is local jobs. We'll talk about that later. So, Honorable Mayor, you tell me how you want to handle this? One at a time, or all together? And then when staff can...
I think you should go through all your conditions, so that they can have a list of them, and just include them in your motion.
Okay. So, your condition about signage?
Yes. And so, related to signage, I know there have been some concerns in terms of ensuring that the community knows who to call when there's an issue. So the recommendation is to modify conditions 78 and 72 in the two CUPs to ensure that the development posts a clearly legible sign on the exterior of construction fencing with a phone number of who to call for any complaints or issues, and also to ensure that the condition includes that upon completion of construction, the developer should post a clearly legible sign on the exterior of the wrought iron fencing with the phone number of a complaint or issues coordinator or manager responsible for managing truck and equipment idling, and to ensure that the condition clearly reflects the truck idling restrictions that are placed on the project. So that is to help with the signage issue you presented. One other one, I know you mentioned solar, and relatedly, there was another recommendation to ensure that electric lawn equipment is used. We know that one hour of emissions creates about the same amount of smog from lawn equipment than 1,100 miles of driving in a car. And so, the recommended condition would be that the applicant and potential landscaping contracts for the subject property shall utilize electric lawn and garden equipment, outdoor power equipment, and other small equipment to eliminate worsened air quality impacts of gasoline-powered and combustion-engine equipment onsite for landscape management and site maintenance. So that would really speak to the local air quality issue that was discussed.
Thank you.
And then, sorry, just related to the employment piece that you asked about, the recommended added condition would be for the applicants to make best efforts to work with Pacific Gateway Workforce Investment Network, or PG-WIN, to employ locally, provide internships, and/or educational opportunities for students to explore the green freight industry as a career. And then one final piece was related to the traffic impact issues that were raised. Recommended added condition to read that a traffic impact analysis must be prepared for this project under the supervision and approval of a registered traffic engineer in the state of California with an engineer stamp to be reviewed by Public Works prior to issuance of a building permit. In addition, any physical street improvements should include a scale drawing stamped by a registered civil engineer, and any conditions generated by the analysis will be made part of these conditions. So as previously discussed, this is not an issue under the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. The project was screened out, but this would be an added layer to really still address those traffic issues that had been raised.
Okay. Thank you for the descriptions. Has these been discussed with the applicant, Cargomatic? Did they agree?
Yes. The applicant is aware and agreeable to the added conditions.
The conditions, okay. So that colleagues, are my conditions are a bit straightforward also regarding this project? I think this is another great example of how an applicant can work with the city to create something that's green, workable, and to the great benefit of the city and for our environment. So I think that, given all the information, and with the added conditions, I would love to have your support. to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sorrow.
Yes, I have a quick question about, from last week, not last week, but the week before that, I just wanted to check on, are all the trucks electric? Or can you share a little bit about the vehicles?
Thanks, Councilmember Sorrow. So it's not that all the trucks are electric. So I think both the appellant and the applicant kind of talked about that last week. It does feel like long ago, but it was just a week ago. But they are lower emissions. So it's covered by Condition 13, and it references low or zero emissions technology. So that includes liquefied natural gas, sometimes referred to as LNG, compressed natural gas, CNG, electric, hydrogen, and other alternative fuels. So all of those have lower particulate and lower NOx emissions than a standard diesel truck, but they're not necessarily all electric. But the way this condition works is, that's today, we're in 2023, but as those zero emission trucks become more and more available, the applicant would need to keep up with that best available technology. So we have that from the regulatory side, but that's also, I don't know how much the applicant talked about it, I watched the tape, but I wasn't here, you know, CargoMatic, they're not just another trucking company, that is their business. They provide green trucking services. And the way it works at the port complex, our port as well as the port of L.A., you know, requires lower emission trucks to access the port complex. So by complying with that and that being part of their market, that is part of the economic advantage that the trucking company, that's their business model. And then the condition is there in place to assure that they remain in compliance. And even if they sold the property, a future operator would be subject to that same condition.
Thank you. Thank you for the report on that. And I want to express my support to Councilmember Yuranga on his condition, as well as that I think it's really important that we do support greener efforts around our trucking, especially with so much conversation happening around the 710 freeway corridor about how do we, now that we're no longer expanding the freeways, how do we create more of a greener corridor by going to lower emission to zero? I know that ideally would love to have zero emission, no NOx, you know, reduction in all levels, but we have to start somewhere. And I think this is a great way and where we can begin to support more greener transportation and also making sure that we have good union-paying jobs as well. I think that's also a really important factor, and I'm glad to hear that Councilmember Yuranga raised up making sure that we also utilize applicants in the Pacific Gateway process to ensuring that they have opportunities for employment, not only good-paying union jobs, but cleaner, working in the green economy as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Zindehah.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to both the applicant and the appellant. I think we were able to learn a lot during this process. Thank you, Councilmember Yuranga, for, you know, all the points that you pointed out this evening. I think those are very, very important points as we move forward. One question of clarification for Madam City Attorney. Can you please clarify what a yes vote would indicate and what a no vote would indicate, just so that we can be clear?
That's an excellent question, council member. So the recommendation from staff is to deny the appeal and approve the project that was upheld by the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kerr.
Yeah, I want to thank the community members for coming out to share both their support and concerns. There are familiar faces here because you are our neighbors. You're working in our city as we speak. You've been located in this city. So I know folks care deeply about this issue. That's why you come to council, is to remind us how much you care about community. So thank you to everyone who came out both last week and this week. And Councilmember Yuranga, thank you for your clarification and your added conditions. I think they make it a more robust item. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yuranga.
Need to clarify a little further. A yes vote on this means that, yes, we deny the appeal, which automatically means that the project will go.
That's correct. A yes vote is, yes, you're approving the recommendation to deny the appeal. Correct.
There you go. I hope that clarifies, that means, Councilmember Zindehah? Okay. One other thing too, is that what this project provides is great training opportunities, not only for neighbors, but for individuals that may be in Hollywood to work on this project through Gateway Cities, through the Pacific Gateway, and also through the addition of solar panels, which also provides some training opportunities here. So I see this project as a win-win, even where, not only for labor, but for the environment. So I appreciate everyone's and thank you for your support.
All right. That satisfies discussion here at the dais. I want to thank everyone for coming out and adding their perspective, the workers who are impacted and speaking here, we certainly recognize and hear you, the community members, we thank you for raising your concerns. And I believe that the conditions laid out by Councilmember Yuranga have strengthened and improved the project. So thank you, Councilmember Yuranga. To the applicant, thank you for investing in Long Beach. Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. All right. Well, now go to general public comment number one. We have one speaker signed up to speak, Ed Deminey.
Good evening. Good evening and happy Ramadan. And observance come unto all spiritual and religious faiths and disciplines. As a non-practicing Muslim, I appreciate today's gesture, and we aspire for the day when Muslims are accepted in our country and not viewed with suspicion nor treated with bias and discrimination. From the police, to the politicians, to the courts, to recognize Ramadan is to celebrate our diversity and fight against bigotry, hate, and bias. In solidarity with our brothers and sisters from the Carpenters Union, I am here to condemn fraud in any form and fashion. I am also seeking your help in confronting fraud in our own building, a homeowners association located at 3565 Linden Avenue in Miscurs District called Lindenwood Condominium Association. Our residents and homeowners are suffering all kinds of ill treatment, ranging from violence to vandalism, harassment, defamation, libel, incitement of hate, financial fraud and waste, and assault on both adults and minors, and the discriminatory cause to misuse police resources against local vocal critics. Our board members have been accused of fraud, embezzlement, forgery, conflict of interest, and no less than 13 ongoing violations of California Corporations Code, as well as several City of Long Beach Code violations. Tunnels are harassed and intimidated, and some describe the situation as a living hell. Our board was recalled last September, yet three board members refused to step down and refused to hold fair elections. The California Attorney General has yet to come to our aid, and our managers are incompetent. We have legal requirements to attend to timely maintenance and retrofits, and time is running out. Please review the information which has been repeatedly submitted to police departments, code enforcement, and other agencies in desperate attempts to cure our problems. Our main elevator has not worked in weeks. Emergency personnel, elderly care, and meal deliveries and medicine are not delivered, and the elderly and the disabled are not being able to attend to their doctor's appointments. Our pool and jacuzzi were red-tagged by the city, and our building is falling apart. I have a tough skin, but my young children here, Zachary and Salma, the elderly, the disabled Holocaust survivors, and disabled veterans are reliant on you to get involved. I can be reached at adamx2@yahoo.com. And as an additional mention, if there are no plans to protect Long Beach residents from impending evictions, be prepared to see thousands of individuals and families displaced and replaced by newcomers with deeper pockets. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. That concludes general public comment. We'll now go to item 22.
Item 22 is report from Development Services, recommendation to approve the first substantial amendment to the Fiscal Year 2022 through 2023 action plan and to execute all necessary documents with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, Citywide.
Thank you. So we have a staff presentation here, and the con plan is really important, and we've made some good updates to it, looking forward to an update. We had a lot of discussion last time we heard it about, you know, having the flexibility to make some bigger investments into some of the commercial rebate programs and other programs. So looking forward to this presentation. Linda.
That is correct, Mayor. We have made some updates, and I think you all are aware that we do adopt the five-year plan regularly, but this is an opportunity for us. It's actually an opportunity to strengthen the plan and some of the provisions related to our homeless emergency. So I will introduce Christopher Coontz, who will introduce staff to make this presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am excited to just introduce the team, and they will give you the presentation. So to my left, I have Megan Sworson, who is our new Bureau Manager for Housing and Neighborhood Services. And Liz Withers is going to give the presentation about this amendment to the action plan, and then we'll take any questions that you may have. Liz.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. This presentation will go over the substantial amendment to the 2223 Action Plan for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Funds. On July 19th... Sorry. On July 19th, 2022, City Council approved the action plan. When there's a substantial change to any activities in the action plan budget by more than 25% or any activity changes related to purpose, scope, or location, a formal amendment must be prepared and submitted to HUD. As part of our amendment process, the document was available for 30 days. A multilingual public notice was issued and posted in two local newspapers and the city website. And on March 15th, 2023, the Long Beach Community Investment Company reviewed the draft and made the recommendation for City Council to approve the changes being proposed today. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, many HUD-funded programs accumulated excess unspent funds. On September 21st, 2022, HUD sent a letter to the city requesting action to expend funds to meet the CDBG expenditure timeliness test, which will be performed on August 2nd, 2023. The proposed adjustments are necessary in order to meet this timeliness test and to advance our five-year consolidated plan priorities and goals of creating affordable housing. It's important to note that the proposed funding reductions to programs won't operationally affect or cancel them as they have sufficient funding to continue their normal operation at the pace expected. This table outlines which programs have proposed funding reductions. A total of 1.807 million is being reallocated. And on a later slide, I will detail how these funds are being proposed to be utilized. The funds being reduced to code enforcement were previously added to code enforcement as a placeholder until the neighborhood grant program being proposed to be added today was fully developed to meet HUD's requirements. With the city's focus on affordable housing production and the state of emergency on homelessness, 1.425 million is being reallocated for land acquisition. Land acquisition is one of the few ways that CDBG funds can assist the acceleration of creating affordable housing. Mentioned briefly in the last slide, 150,000 is being reallocated to fund the neighborhood grant program. This program was mentioned as a desired activity through the public input process during the consolidated plan development last year. It will allow for neighborhood associations and nonprofits to have access to funds for neighborhood projects serving CDBG residents. An adjustment in the amount of 232,000 to the rapid rehousing and street outreach budgets is being proposed to support the city's year-round emergency shelter, as requested by the Homeless Services Bureau. Other federal, state, and local resources are also used to fund rapid rehousing and street outreach programs. And lastly, we are proposing to add rental payment assistance within the existing security deposit program to help prevent homelessness. There is no funding adjustment to this particular item, just the expansion of the program to include rent. And here you can see the funding readjustments to those activities I just covered on the previous slide, for a total reallocation of 1.807 million dollars. So to reiterate and summarize, approving the substantial amendment will not materially impact action plan programs and will help meet HUD's timeliness test to ensure we don't lose any funding. The reallocations align with the city and HUD housing priorities and also help support the current state of emergency on homelessness. Here is the staff recommendation for this item. The substantial amendment must be submitted to HUD as soon as possible, as funds must be expended and drawn well before the timeliness test on August 2nd, 2023. That concludes the presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Kerr.
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation and the work to continue our goals of affordable housing. So thank you to staff.
Thank you. Councilmember Duggan.
Thanks to staff for bringing this forward. There are some positive reallocations of funds. I think it's great. I want to highlight one program in this package, and that's the neighborhood grant program. I think it's great that we're offering funding for neighborhood associations and nonprofits to do local work. That impacts our neighborhoods directly. Who better to make an impact on neighborhoods than our residents who care about the neighborhood and they're working as volunteers in neighborhood associations? I just wanted to make sure you knew. Thank you very much. Thanks to staff and good work.
Fantastic. Thank you. Councilwoman Sorrow.
Yes, I just want to thank you for the presentation on the proposed reallocation. As you know, a lot of the CDBG grants have gone to my district, and I, you know, I'm grateful for what it has been doing as far as the Placebase Initiative and many of the others. And I think that it's just important to hear, how does this, again, it is a lot of money, 1.1425 for land acquisition, but at the same time, it costs a lot now to acquire land. So I'm just wondering, how much of a significant impact does it make by doing this shift? What would it allow us to specifically do?
Sure. Thanks for the question, Councilmember Sorrow and members of council. So you can't buy a single piece of land with 1.4, 1.7 million dollars, but what you're talking about is financing from the city towards that purchase, and we combine that with other funds. So we have been able to assist through the LBCIC acquiring a piece of land for a future project that'll be in the neighborhood of 100 units. So if you think about that million, 2 million range, leverage with other funds, it allows a developer to get a piece of land under contract and under site control. So does 100 units of affordable housing, you know, completely change the balance of poverty in our city? It doesn't. But what I would tell you is it puts us 100 units closer to where we need to be. And for the 100 families that are going to live in that project, it's life-changing. It literally brings stability to those families and can mean that they can concentrate on their kids' learning objectives, and they can concentrate on their health and not be concentrating on the precarious nature of their housing. So we take it very seriously. We think it's very impactful, but you know, that million to 2 million range, that really relates to about one project up to about 100 units.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. I just wanted to make sure that we do share how we continue to make a big effort, you know, one unit at a time to ensure that we're increasing our housing stock and supply. And just want to make sure to continuously share the ways that we're looking to doing that. The other is, where are these funds likely to be used at? I think that's important to share as well.
I'd like to just weigh in on that. I think you're aware that we've got... I think you're aware that we've gotten clear council direction to continue to look for additional sites for homeless opportunities and shelters. So the fact that we have this funds, these funds available, it gives us a little bit more flexibility. And I would just highlight that we are in the process of looking at potential home key sites. That cycle has now opened and we are exploring opportunities that we will be probably within the next several weeks or so, be bringing back to the council some options that we're considering under the home key application. And to Christopher's earlier point, these are funds that would leverage and enable the city to consider potential properties or sites or locations that we might not otherwise. So it just, it helps the effort as he as he's mentioned.
Thank you. I really appreciate that additional response about it's not only just a long-term housing we're looking into, but also, as mentioned earlier, shelters. So we're looking at different levels of ensuring that we're addressing how to prevent homelessness in addition to making sure we get people immediate housing as well. So thank you so much.
All right. Councilman Austin.
Thank you. And I also want to just thank staff for the presentation and the work. And my question is a follow-up, I think, to Councilmember Sorrow's question in terms of where these funds will be utilized. I understand that, you know, most of, much of North Long Beach, West Side, Central, the west side of our city is is under CDBG, there's zones, right? Will these funds be required to be utilized in those zones, somewhere in that space?
No. So thank you for the question, Councilman Austin. And if you can indulge us a second. So if we were having this discussion 10 years ago, it would have been a different answer. So the philosophy 10 years ago was there are areas that are disadvantaged and that's where you put the money. So when you're, when we're doing physical improvements, if we're improving sidewalks or planting trees, that's still the approach for this type of money. But when we're talking about, you know, providing housing opportunities, we're talking about serving the disadvantaged residents of our city and actually opening up new opportunities for them. So it could be in, you know, one of those CDBG census tracts, but it also could be somewhere else. So we're working with Councilmember Duggan on a project in her district that's in a, what we call high resource area. But it will serve folks that are are very low on the income level and and perhaps, you know, give them an opportunity to experience a different neighborhood. So our philosophy really has pivoted in that. We've done a lot of affordable housing projects over the year in Council District 6, and we will continue to do projects in Council District 6. But we're all focused on the staff side at broadening the approach and making sure that housing, including affordable housing, is something that happens in all nine districts of the city. So we really are trying to pivot and and kind of change our approach a little bit. And and I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it's very encouraging to hear that there's some flexibility. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Exode.
Excuse me. I just have one clarification question, because I imagine it might be a little bit confusing to the public to look at the emergency solutions grants and say like, oh, shouldn't we be allocating money to rapid rehousing, street outreach, and emergency shelters, right? Like, why is it they were reallocating some of that money to the emergency shelter, right? Since we're focusing on homelessness, I just wanted you to give you an opportunity to kind of explain the decision-making there.
So the ESG grant is federal funds we receive for homelessness. Quite frankly, we don't get our fair share and I wish we got more. So the way that Health and Human Services operates our homeless programs is they receive other funds, including a large amount of funds from the county, certain funds from the state, grants that we apply for. So because the ESG is a smaller chunk of funds, we figure out what the restrictions are on all the other grants and all the other funding sources and where there are holes, we fill that with ESG. So we do have to go through this exercise from time to time where we kind of move those federal dollars around. If we were receiving a better allocation or our fair share of those dollars, you know, maybe that balancing wouldn't be necessary. So when you just look at that chart in the staff report, it sounds like we're choosing one or the other. But we're doing everything in that chart, but we're using different plots of money for for different services. And we are, I know the need is huge, but we are providing a higher level of service at a higher level of funding in terms of homelessness than we ever have before.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So again, this is, thank you so much to the council. Is there any public comment here? Okay, seeing none. I'll just add a add a comment. So this is great, you know, you know, when we submitted the con plan, you know, things have changed and we're in a homeless emergency and staff has responded to make investments as such and and along the, and that's good, that's a good thing to do. One thing to note, the Neighborhood Grant Program, that is something that's limited to those communities. So the rest of the program's idea is you can put affordable housing anywhere and it could benefit low to moderate income communities. So tho- those dollars are more flexible. The Neighborhood Grant Program, those are targeted low moderate neighborhood groups. And the goal is to work with neighborhood associations in those areas to do additional work during the summer, which is before the next budget would be proposed, right? So could you spend a little bit of time on that?
Yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, I know you have a large interest in neighborhood grant programs and and the departments working with the city manager and our financial management partners to figure out how we can support neighborhood associations throughout the city. And I know that that's your goal as mayor and that's the council's goal. For this particular pot of money, the CDBG pot of money, we can only use it to support neighborhood associations that are in eligible census tracts. So that's not to say we won't be providing support to neighborhood associations. So there was money in the mid-year budget adjustment for that. And there is money that the the city manager has made available to accomplish that goal. So we're going to cover those neighborhood associations that are in CDBG.
Right.
Through this funding source and use other funding sources for those neighborhood associations that are not. And I know you have the kind of Congress of Neighborhoods type event coming up and we'll be, you know, talking more about these programs at that event.
Right. So the idea here was the mid-year amendment was the broader funding that needed to, in order to provide neighborhood association grants citywide. And the portion in CDBG areas is reflected here. So this was the follow-up of actually making the amendment to make sure that that budget adjustment was legal.
That's correct. And a year ago, we floated this idea with HUD and they said no, and we've, we're very persistent. So we put some more detail together on the program and have discussed it with HUD and we're confident that this amendment will be approved.
Fantastic. Thank you. Councilmember Duggan, anything else?
Quick question. How do the neighborhood associations apply for this? Did you cover that already for the CDBG?
So there's an application process being developed, which is not complete today. And I think we need to have some meetings with the city manager and with the mayor about how that program gets rolled out. So we'll be informing you and every council office about that process, but it's coming soon, but not quite today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bottom line, it's good stuff. We're supporting community empowerment. Members, please catch your vote.
Motion is carried.
All right. Thank you. We'll now go to item 23.
Item 23 is report from Development Services, recommendation to receive and file a presentation on current rent assistance programs and resources for tenants and landlords citywide.
So Mayor, I'd like to introduce Christopher Kuntz, but I just want to preface that introduction by saying that housing, affordable housing, it's been an issue not just here in Long Beach, but throughout the state. And we're really pleased that this city council has, for many years, even before COVID, been taking active steps for a number of years to address just renter protections, renter programs, and property owner protections around that, the topic of affordability. So this presentation will provide an overview of some of the historical programs that we've adopted, as well as some of the current programs, in addition to programs that are available statewide to provide renter protections. So with that, I'd like to introduce Christopher Kuntz, who will do an overview of those those programs.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, in a moment, I'm going to hand it over to Mary Dow from our housing group who prepared this presentation. I will say, back during your time as a council member, one of the things that you said was important and impressed on on staff was to sort of build up within the department the rental housing expertise and the ability to engage in rental housing issues and landlord tenant issues. And we've done that in a number of ways, through studies, engagements with tenants and landlords, but also by building our staff expertise. And that includes Mary, who is going to take you through this evening's presentation. And then I'll have some closing thoughts for you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. On March 17th, the city council directed staff to provide a report on current rent assistance programs and resources available, including a recent history of tenant protections and a recent history of tenant assistance programs, as LA County's COVID-19 Tenant Protection Resolution expired on March 31st. Although the resolution expired, certain tenant protections remain in effect. This presentation outlines the recent history of and present-day tenant protection laws and tenant assistance programs applicable to the city. On June 11th, 2019, the city council adopted a Tenant Relocation Assistance Ordinance, LBLMC Chapter 8.97, that required rental property owners with four units or more to pay relocation assistance payments to tenants that received a notice of rent increase of 10% or more in any 12 consecutive month period, received a notice to vacate due to the landlord's rehabilitation of the unit, or were in good standing and received a notice of non-renewal or notice to vacate. The ordinance was a tenant relocation assistance program and did not restrict rent increases or require just cause for termination. This ordinance was rescinded for reasons to be explained shortly. After the city council passed LBLMC 8.97, the state legislature adopted the State Tenant Protection Act of 2019, also known as AB 1482, which took effect on January 1st, 2020, and contains two major provisions. It prohibits annual rent increases of greater than 5% plus the change in CPI, or 10%, whichever is lower. It also requires that landlords have just cause for termination of tenancies. The state regulation includes rent control and just cause provisions, providing significantly greater tenant protections than LBLMC 8.97 did. The policy triggers in AB 1482 were also more stringent, making LBLMC 8.97 effectively inoperable. In response to AB 1482, the council voted to repeal LBLMC 8.97 on December 3rd, 2019. Furthermore, the council had a desire to adopt an ordinance with just cause termination of tenancy provisions that were more protective than those of AB 1482, and later adopted the Just Cause for Termination of Tenancies ordinance on March 10th, 2020. Lastly, the council authorized the creation of a Senior and Disabled Security Deposit Assistance Program for qualified lower-income households. LBLMC 8.99 and the Security Deposit Program will be described further later in this presentation. We're now moving into our discussion on pandemic-era protections. With the emergence of the pandemic, the tenant protections landscape had to evolve to address the fact that people all over the country were experiencing substantial losses of income as a result of business closures, the loss of hours or wages, or layoffs related to COVID-19, hindering their ability to keep up with their rent and leaving them vulnerable to eviction. Governor Newsom issued a series of executive orders aimed at mitigating the impacts of widespread job interruptions due to the pandemic. The executive orders authorized local governments to halt evictions, encouraged financial institutions to slow foreclosures, protected renters and homeowners against utility shut-offs, extended the period for response by tenants to unlawful detainer actions, and prohibited evictions of tenants who satisfied certain requirements. Additionally, on April 6th of 2020, the California Judicial Council issued a moratorium on all evictions and judicial foreclosures. All previous COVID-19-related protection measures were based on executive orders by the governor. The Tenant Relief Act was the first piece of state legislation signed into law on August 31st, 2020, in response to the pandemic and its economic fallout, and aimed to provide relief to renters and homeowners struggling to make payments. It contained several tenant protection provisions. Principal among them is preventing tenant eviction due to failure to pay rent from COVID-19 related hardship. Additional provisions included creating a repayment plan system that allows tenants who are unable to pay rent to repay missed payments and installments over time, providing relief to small landlords through anti-foreclosure protections, as well as a fund established by the state to compensate landlords for up to 80% of unpaid rent from tenants experiencing financial hardship, and establishing new notice requirements for landlords seeking to evict tenants, and extending the standard three-day noticing to 15 days. AB 3088 was intended to provide a temporary solution to the economic crisis, but its protections were extended multiple times by subsequent legislation. SB 91 extended and modified the protections until June 30th, 2021, and established the state-run rental assistance program, which provided financial assistance to eligible low-income tenants and landlords. The program allowed eligible tenants to receive up to 80% of their unpaid rent between April 1st of 2020 and March 31st, 2021, if the landlord agreed to forgive the remaining 20%. AB 832 extended the protections provided by SB 91 until September 30th, 2021, and expanded the rental assistance program to cover 100% of unpaid rent between April 1st, 2020 and September 30th, 2021. Lastly, AB 2179 extended the March 31st, 2022 protection for rental assistance applicants to June 30th, 2022. Yeah, we broke it up a little bit, so we can go a few more flat slides further. Thank you. In March of 2020, LA County declared a state of emergency and imposed a temporary moratorium on evictions for residential and commercial tenants impacted by the pandemic through its COVID-19 Tenant Protections Resolution. The Board of Supervisors modified and extended these protections in response to the evolving nature of the pandemic. It was last amended on January 24th of this year and was extended through its expiration on March 31st. The resolution provided protections against eviction for non-payment of rent by residential or commercial tenants impacted by COVID-19, froze rent increases, and established anti-harassment and retaliation protections, among other things. For residential tenants and mobile home space renters who utilize the county's non-payment of rent protections, or for tenants with unauthorized occupants or pets, the following protections have remained beyond the expiration date. Protections against no-fault evictions, except for qualified owner move-ins, qualified tenants whose household income is at 80% AMI or below that notified their landlords before March 31st, 2023, of their inability to pay rent during the rent protection period and made a payment plan, may assert an affirmative defense to an unlawful detainer action. Such residential tenants have up to 12 months to repay any past due rent that was accrued during the rent protection period. Starting April 1st, 2023, landlords are required to provide tenants with a 30-day notice to cure or quit prior to filing an eviction based on back due rental payments accrued prior to March 31st, 2023, and for the presence of unauthorized occupants and pets. And lastly, anti-harassment and retaliation protections. Moving on to the city of Long Beach, local ordinances, such as the Just Cause for Termination of Tenancies Ordinance, LBLMC 8.99, will continue to provide tenants with protection against arbitrary evictions beyond the pandemic by requiring landlords to have a just cause for terminating tenancies and establishing relocation assistance and notice requirements. Just cause reasons include those which are at fault of the tenant, as well as no fault of the tenant, most of which are listed here on this slide. Other provisions of the ordinance include notice requirements. Landlords must provide tenants with a written notice of termination that includes the reason for the eviction. The notice must be given at least 30 days before the termination date. If the tenant has lived in the unit for at least one year, the notice period is extended to 60 days. Relocation assistance. Landlords are required to provide relocation assistance to tenants who are displaced due to a no-fault eviction. The amount of relocation assistance or rent waiver shall be equal to the greater of $4,500 or two months of the tenant's rent for substantial for substantial remodel cases, and one month of the tenant's rent for all other no-fault just cause terminations. And lastly, exemptions. Just to note that some rental properties may be exempt depending on factors such as the age and type of the property. In addition, the Tenant Relocation and Code Enforcement Ordinance protects tenants from severe code violations that threaten the life and safety of occupants. In some circumstances, the hazardous living conditions require tenants to vacate their homes to allow for extensive repairs or demolition. If relocation is necessary, the property owner is required to provide assistance in the amount of $3,366, as well as a move-back option. This ordinance is meant to ensure that assistance is available to tenants who face displacement due to code violations. It protects the public health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of the city. We're now moving on to talk about tenant assistance programs. Upon repealing L B M C 8.97 on December 3rd, 2019, the Council also established the Senior and Disabled Security Deposit Program. This program is designed to assist low-income seniors and individuals with disabilities by providing a one-time grant to cover the security deposit required by landlords. This income-qualified program provides up to $3,000. The goal of the program is to help seniors and individuals with disabilities secure safe and affordable housing and to reduce homelessness among these vulnerable populations. The program is funded by the city's Community Development Block Grant Program and is administered by the Housing Authority. Long Beach CARES Emergency Rental Assistance Program was the first rental assistance program to be launched immediately at the start of the pandemic. It provided emergency rental assistance grants to Long Beach households that were income-eligible and had been economically impacted during the COVID-19 pandemic. It provided rental assistance of up to $1,000 per month for three months to households earning 80% AMI or less prior to COVID-19 who had experienced loss of income. Payments totaling $4.2 million were made directly to property owners, assisting 1,431 households, alleviating the financial burden on landlords and property owners while ensuring that tenants could remain stably housed. Additionally, the Los Angeles County COVID-19 Rent Relief Program, a non-city-run program, provided emergency rental assistance of up to $10,000 to income-eligible renters. The program, which was administered by LA County Contracted Nonprofits, assisted 1,154 Long Beach households for a total amount of $9.3 million. Building upon the success of L B CARES, the Long Beach Emergency Rental Assistance Program, L B E R A P, aimed to further support tenants and landlords by providing direct payments and assistance for past due rent and utilities. This slide lists the congressional and state legislative acts that created appropriations for Long Beach E R A P. And this slide delineates the funding sources for L B E R A P. Ultimately, the city leveraged state and federal funds to provide critical assistance to tenant households during the pandemic and prevent catastrophic displacement due to non-payment of rent through L B CARES and L B E R A P. Together with the county's program, 9,065 households were assisted for a total of $83.6 million. Lastly, the Development Services Department continues to work closely with StayHoused LA, a partnership between the County of Los Angeles, local governments, and legal service providers, as well as the Fair Housing Foundation, a private nonprofit educational partner agency. Both organizations provide tenants with the information and support needed to exercise their rights, including right to counsel. Additionally, the Long Beach Resource Line, operated by trained and knowledgeable resource navigators from the Department of Health and Human Services, provides support to all Long Beach residents through information and assistance on topics such as housing, food access, and legal aid. Development Services also has a staff member dedicated to housing services and referrals, assisting both tenants and landlords in navigating housing policy and understanding their rights and responsibilities. Although the tenant protection laws for renters affected by the COVID-19 pandemic in LA County have sunset, the protections and programs that remain are more effective in protecting tenants than those that existed before the COVID-19 pandemic. There are still many disadvantaged individuals and families that struggle to pay their rent. This is a function of the city and region's shortage of affordable housing, shortcomings in the federal and state social safety net, wages, employment, and other complex issues. Staff recommends that the City Council continue to address these issues, but through the established policy pathways outlined in the Everyone Home Report, rather than within any type of COVID-19 emergency ordinance or policy. And with that, I'll turn it over to Christopher Coontz.
So thanks, Mary. And Council, I just, we went through that long presentation that's very much about tenant protections, but I just also want to talk about the other side of the coin. We're a city with a lot of landlords, and some of them are large, you know, corporate landlords, but we have a lot of small property owners in this city. It might be, you know, someone that owns a fourplex and that is their profession and retirement. So it's been important to strike a balance, and I think this council has done that over the years, between the needs of those housing providers and the tenants. And I think when you look at the rental assistance, $83 million between the city and the county that assisted the tenant in not being evicted and coming current on their rent, but those payments were made to the landlord. So I just wanted to underscore that this is about, you know, partnership and bringing different parties together that sometimes are far apart, and trying to work together to find the optimal outcome. And that's what we continue to do up through today. So with that, we're glad to take all of your questions.
All right, thank you. So Councilwoman Sorrow presented, asked for this report, so...
Yes, could I, could we go to public comment?
We have six members of the public signed up to speak. Deanna Knowles, Van Buie, Myra Garcia Cortez, Jason Mercado, Sani Kenfe, and Winston Delaurier. Deanna, you're up. Next is Van.
Good evening, Council. My name is Deanna Knowles. I'm a community organizer with LANE, the Long Beach Coalition for Good Jobs and a Healthy Community. I'm also a resident in District 9. I stand here before you urging you to protect vulnerable Long Beach residents at risk of homelessness, especially since emergency tenant protections have expired on March 31st. Tenant protections are necessary in order to keep our community healthy and housed. These protections have been of the utmost importance during the pandemic while communities were struggling financially. We know that folks are still struggling, some months behind on rent and on the brink of homelessness. We need Long Beach to join other cities like Los Angeles in adopting stronger tenant protections to prevent the displacement of renters and their families. Please help keep families in our homes and a part of our community, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Van.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Van Buie, and I work with Long Beach Residents Empowered, or LIBRE. We need our local leaders like you all to protect vulnerable renters on the brink of homelessness, especially since emergency tenant protections expired just last month. We at LIBRE have already started seeing a wave of evictions and hitting our community members so far this month, and it's only been about two weeks. Tenant protections must be a part of creating meaningful ways to recover from the pandemic and current local efforts to solve our homelessness crisis. LIBRE works with many low-income renters of substantial amount who are immigrants and/or people of color, and who live in fear of being displaced from the city that they've called home for so long. Stronger tenant protections would alleviate that impending fear and stress that our community members live with every day of fear of being placed on the streets. To bring housing justice to your constituents in Long Beach would be to implement permanent tenant protections like codified right to counsel or more effective, longer-term rental assistance programs. We need Long Beach to join other cities like Los Angeles in adopting stronger tenant protections to prevent the displacement of renters and their families. Time is ticking very quickly for our community members, and action from City Council is needed immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Myra.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and council members. My name is Myra Fernanda, and I am a resident of Council District 2 and an organizer with Long Beach Residents Empowered. Since tenant protections ended on March 31st, we need our local leaders to protect vulnerable renters on the brink of homelessness. Tenant protections must be added to help our communities recovering from the pandemic and aid current local efforts to solve the homelessness crisis. These protections have effectively reduced homelessness and kept people in their homes when financial strains from the pandemic caused them to fall behind on rent payments. However, that rent debt continues to weigh on renters today, and it's weighing really heavily. What does that mean for our tenants now that they're vulnerable and unprotected? The homelessness crisis will remain difficult to solve if action isn't taken soon for renters on the brink of homelessness. Homelessness prevention must include tenant protections. Adding to the list of concerns are how true affordability continues to move further from the grasp of renters, leaving them vulnerable to evictions and losing their homes. There are tenants who, despite being able to stay up to date with their rent payments, live in uncertainty about being displaced if their rents increase or if they are evicted through no fault of their own, for example, cases of substantial remodeling. We need Long Beach to join cities like Los Angeles in adopting stronger tenant protections to prevent the displacement of renters and their families. Please keep our renters safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jason.
Hello, my name is Jason Mercado. I am a resident of Council District 2, and I'm also a tenant organizer and a volunteer at LIBRE. We need our local leaders to protect vulnerable renters on the brink of homelessness, especially since emergency tenant protections through LA County have expired on March 31st. Tenant protections must be a part of creating meaningful ways to recover from the pandemic and current local efforts to solve the homelessness crisis. People like Amber Pittman, Teresa Mendoza, single mothers who are low-income and were unfortunately evicted from the units a couple of weeks ago because each of them owed thousands of dollars in back rent since they were affected by the pandemic. During these times, these folks got their, got their court summons and were waiting for a court date. During that time, they tried to obtain legal representation, but they were turned away by both BASTA and LAFLA because of how thinly stretched their capacity has become since the end of county protections. Honorable Mayor Rex Richardson, Vice Mayor Cindy Allen, and council members, I ask that we need Long Beach to join other cities like LA in adopting stronger tenant protections to prevent the displacement of renters and their families. Please help keep families in their homes and a part of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sani Kenfe.
Sani Kenfe, Sixth District resident. First, I want to thank Mr. Coontz's office for this presentation. I think it really provided an opportunity to see this rare moment in American history where we subsidize tens of millions of dollars in landlord relief during a global pandemic. Mr. Coontz, I'm going to list a couple properties I want you guys to look into. 2,000 Long Beach Boulevard, 1875 Pacific Avenue, and 1250 East Pacific Coast Highway. These are approximately about six acres of land that's available, that you can use that $1.4 million towards acquiring. Those are all, you know, you're going to have to throw RFP out there for me to help you, but I can definitely walk you into the offices of those commercial landowners that want to have a public-private partnership conversation with you. With respect to the current tenant protection that we are discussing today with this item, thankfully, we have a state assembly and state senate that is doing, you know, ample job of fighting the good fight for tenants in this state. I think that right now, we have a rent cap currently coming up that's going to drop it from the 10% currently into the 5% and lower that's in the assembly right now. I also know that Mr. Alex Lee is pushing towards social housing, which I think that ultimately is one of the only solutions towards a lot of these conversations that we're having. We can't continue to look towards the private market to respond to the fact that people are not getting paid higher wages and still have to live in real estates that's dilapidated. I mean, you know, there's some, as much as I love certain craftsman villages and areas, there's parts of the city where people are living in housing that's over 100 years old. And, you know, we're not going to be able to develop the 3.5 million units to respond to the housing crisis. And we're expecting the private market that pushed for the same issue to suddenly come up with the solution. The real solution is that the government has to be involved. And the only way that the government can get involved is instead of subsidizing landlords, is they get into the market themselves and acquire the land. So those three properties that I listed to you, that's over six acres of land. They're developing 194 unit right across the street from me that they bought for less than $1.4 million. It's over 200 units that they're developing on Long Beach Boulevard. So maybe we can look towards things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Winston?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council. Thank you for hearing me. The folks before me have said a lot about kind of the paradox of trying to fight the homelessness crisis without, you know, protecting folks, you know, from becoming homeless. So I'm not going to say too much about that. What I want to talk about right now is the ways in which strong tenant protections, specifically strong eviction protections, don't just protect people at risk of homelessness, but really serve to protect all renters. For one thing, it keeps our communities intact. You know, we're not losing our neighbors. We're not losing our friends. You know, but in a more immediate sense, you know, many people, many friends of mine or acquaintances of mine during the pandemic were able to push, were able to basically demand their rights as tenants, demand repairs, demand, you know, services that are, you know, legally, legal obligations of the landlords, but that frankly, in the absence of strong eviction protections, are really a dead letter. You know, I know many people who, you know, were in a position to say, "Look, you can, you know, you can carry out your legal responsibilities or all withhold rent," and got their way, which when they really, despite, you know, what's the laws on paper, would not have been in a position to win that struggle before these eviction protections. So I think that's just an important point to highlight. Thank you.
Thank you. That satisfies public comment. We'll take it back behind the rail. Councilwoman Sorrow?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mary and staff, for the presentation. I appreciate you giving a history of where we were prior to COVID because we were being proactive to considering what we could do to address issues around evictions and tenant protections. And I think that, you know, we had had to deal with the impact of COVID in the last few years. And I think it's really important that we look at the variety of assistance that's been provided. But now we're kind of getting back in a place where, how do we continue the conversation to this day, I think, in the aftermaths of COVID, but also in the state of emergency as well, that we've been and continue to have conversation around protecting tenants and as well as addressing, preventing homelessness, as well as how do we address homelessness? So I want to also just thank the numerous people, advocates, organizers, who have contacted my office to make sure that you share your thoughts. my office to make sure that you share your thoughts, and I want to make sure to expand on Director Coontz's comment that partners are not just with the residents and landlords, but also with all of you as we continue this conversation. Really appreciate that you made sure to continue to do the advocacy because that's really what it takes in partnership to make sure we continue on this pathway to thinking about what more we can do. You know, I think that was mentioned earlier that we provided $200,000 to right to counsel. I think that we're going to continue the conversation, so I appreciate that we're able to have this in the aftermaths of the moratorium ending, and it's really meant so that we can continue to explore in partnership. I think that, as shared earlier, it's a national problem, but I think in, at least on our end as a city, we are able to continue to be, I think, dedicated as well as committed and passionate to finding the best solution possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zendaya.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much, Councilwoman Dr. Suli Sorrow, for bringing this item forward. I think it's very important, especially right now as we enter the era of post-COVID and where the protections have been ceased as of March 31st. I think that, you know, one of our greatest tools in preventing homelessness is making sure that we have a robust rent assistance programs for our tenants and landlords so that we can together work on keeping people housed and making sure property investments are actualized for our landlords as well. As being a person that is a renter here, along with the majority of residents in the city of Long Beach, this continues to be very important to me, so I also look forward to continuing this conversation and making sure that we can establish some good programs for our tenants. Thank you, Dr. Suli Sorrow.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and also thank you, staff, for the presentation. And just a huge thank you to Dr. Councilwoman Suli Sorrow for requesting this information last night. It's just important that we're receiving this update because, as we all know and heard, our county COVID-19-related tenant protections expired, you know, in March, and our residents and our landlords need to know what resources and assistance programs that are available to them. You know, as we know, so many of my residents, all of our residents throughout the city really depend on, really depended on this assistance, and I'm really worried for so many of them as these protections have come to an end. So it's just helpful for us to understand where we are, and I hope we can continue to, you know, enact meaningful policies and programs that support our residents as well as our tenants. So thank you again for this update, and thank you, Councilwoman Sorrow, for requesting it. It's really important.
All right. Thank you. I'll just add my thanks to Councilwoman Sorrow for asking staff to provide this update, and thanks to staff for the, you know, very comprehensive update. It's important for folks to know the full story. There's been, we've come a long way, and, you know, and we need to give credit to the community for pushing and prodding along the way to help us get to where we are. Now, we know that we're in Southern California, so housing is a challenge. We're in a really constrained market, so it's going to continue to push us to innovate and to think about how we can ensure that people aren't forced out of our communities. We were ahead of Los Angeles, just to be clear, on Just Cause Protections. We moved those, was it 2019? The Just Cause Protections?
LB Cares?
No, the Just Cause Protections.
So there was a policy in 2019 that was replaced by a different policy in 2020 based on changes in state law. I'm very proud of the work we've done here in the city, so you didn't ask me, but I'm going to tell you. I mean, we operated our own rental assistance program, and we operated it well. LA attempted to operate a program, closed it down, and handed it back to the state. We've done an awesome job, and not me, the staff behind me, you know, has done an awesome job of working with tenants and landlords to get them relief over the last three years.
Right. So I remember there was the first iteration of Just Cause, the second iteration of Just Cause, then there was, you're absolutely right, we refined, and it, you're absolutely, Councilman Austin, I think, led the motion on the first tranche of rental assistance with the LB, with the, yeah, LB Cares, that was the state funding, and then we got the federal funding and continued it. We know that Rights of Counsel has been a program that has been utilized. We just added an additional $250,000 last week in advance, in advance, I'm sorry? It was 200? Okay, an additional $200,000 because we saw that that pot of funds was being utilized, and so we want to continue to support and uplift that program. But at the end of the day, we're going to continue to have a housing crisis until we produce more, produce more housing. It's not really a matter of the amount of space or not in my backyard on housing. Those attitudes have come and gone. This is about, you know, we created the space. Langus Element identified space for 26,000 units, but we know that they're not going to be built unless we have resources to provide subsidies, and subsidies could be a whole host of things. It doesn't necessarily always be money. You know, it could be expedited planning processes or other incentives that can help provide housing that's affordable, because the goal here isn't just to approve market-rate housing. We have to approve housing that's, that's affordable at every income level, because that's what we have in our city. We have people at every income level in our city. So it's going to force us to be more innovative. We're going to have to look into partnerships like what we discussed at the last council meeting, partnerships, regional solutions to challenges. So there's a lot more that we need to, we need to do to make sure that we can produce housing to the scale of a city our size needs to produce. You know, housing ages, people age, and so does housing, and if you don't invest in preservation of affordable housing or production of affordable housing, it creates broader social issues for your city. That's not an indicator of a healthy city. So a healthy city does provide for growth. The reality is, you know, if you have a child today, that child, Lord willing, will be 18 or 20 and looking for a place to live at some point, and we need to make sure we're providing for that. We know that seniors, you know, get on a fixed income, and we have to make sure that they can age with dignity in our community. So when we think about prevention, there are the policy things, but there's also the focus we need to continue to place on production. So thanks so much, everyone. We've already heard public comment. Members, please cast your vote to receive and file this report.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. Twenty-four, please.
Item 24 is report from Public Works, recommendation to adopt specifications and award a contract to All American Asphalt in an annual amount not to exceed $50 million. City Y.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, no staff report is recommended here. Is there any public comment? Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. We'll go to item 25.
Item 25 is report from City Attorney, recommendation to declare ordinance amending the Long Beach Municipal Code relating to general regulations of advisory bodies, read the first time and laid over to the next regular meeting of the city council for final reading. City Y.
Thank you. This was discussed at the last meeting. This helped address and change some of the compensation challenges we had. Is there any public comment here? Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Twenty-six, please.
Item 26, report from City Attorney, recommendation to declare ordinance amending the Long Beach Municipal Code relating to boxing and wrestling exhibition, read and adopted as read. City Y.
Is there any public comment here? Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Twenty-eight.
Item 28, communication from Councilwoman Zendaya, recommendation to increase appropriations by $8,380 to provide contribution to DICK Life, the United Cambodian Community, Central Cha, Marcus Hobbs, ZW USA Inc., five key schools and programs. California families in focus.
Thank you. Councilman Zendaya has anything? Okay. Is there any public comment here? Members, please cast your vote. Twenty-nine, please.
Item 29, communication from Councilmember Rick Odie, Vice Mayor Allen, and Councilman Austin, recommendation to increase appropriations by $30,000 to support the 2023 Uptown Jazz Festival.
It's that time of the year.
It is. Looking forward to putting my stamp on it.
Anything, councilmember? Putting your stamp on, let's go. I'll be there with bells on. Let's go. Let's go. Any public comment here? All right, members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
All right. Now we'll move to general public comment number two. Any members of the public here to address city council? Seeing none, we'll now go to announcements and adjournment. Councilwoman Sorrow.
Thank you, Mayor. So this Saturday, ALC 7 is going to be doing a cleanup on 1020 Gabiota Avenue at 8:30 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., and breakfast will be provided with materials and dumpster. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Zendaya.
We are proud to welcome the Grand Prix to Long Beach this weekend. Hope to see all of you there.
All right. Councilwoman Sorrow, you queued up again?
Oh, no, that was me.
All right. Well, thank you so much. That satisfies. That concludes our city council meeting. Thanks, and have a good night.